Go ahead and call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission for August 5th. Can we start with the roll call, please?
Ahern.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Janeser.
Here.
Mickelson.
Here.
Willer.
Yadi.
Here. Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. We get a motion to approve the agenda.
I move. Bathke.
Second.
And a second. We get a roll call vote, please.
All in favor? Voice votes just fine. Yep.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, we'll open the floor for public comment. Okay. Oh, yeah. You can go ahead and step forward.
I first want to learn. My name is Bonnie Winslow-Garvin. I live a block away from here. And I was concerned when A&E Outdoor Power was asked to move. And now I'm real confused about what the proposal is for that land that's in my neighborhood. I've lived here for 29 years. So I don't feel I... I don't want to speak first. I want to learn first. So I don't know if it's going to be explained tonight.
I believe you're talking about the Urban Central District rezoning. Is that right?
Well, I don't know.
The one adjacent to the railroad tracks there?
What used to be where A&E Outdoor Power was. And I guess it's going to be...
Yep. So that'll be... That was delayed to the September meeting. So we won't consider it tonight. So it'll be September the...
First Tuesday.
But what is the opportunity for discussion? And what is the opportunity for the public to learn about what that discussion will be?
So we'll have a public hearing just like this in about a month.
Okay.
Staff will put out... So we'll have a public hearing for a planning commission. We'll have an opportunity to speak on each item. So we'll do a... Similar to what we'll do tonight is staff will give a presentation. Developer gets to say something. And then the... Actually, I think the public gets to speak first about what they have comments on it. And then ultimately gets forward to city council. Same process.
So that tract will be discussed tonight?
No. It'll be in September.
It will not be discussed in September.
Will not be. Other portions of the Urban Central District will. But that... The part that we talked about at the neighborhood meeting is in September.
Okay.
So no vote on that tonight.
So no vote. But the opportunity to learn about it will be that night?
They're good neighbor meetings?
Or are there things in writing that will be available before that?
Pardon? We already had it.
Yeah. That's... Are those... Were those recorded at all?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry. What was that?
I missed what you said. I'm sorry.
I missed what you said.
Yeah. We had a neighborhood... Were you at the neighborhood meeting we had?
I was out of town.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So we did have a neighborhood meeting there. We got a lot of good information from that. So we're taking some of the information or actually all of the information or questions that we had. We'll delve into those questions and then answer some more. Provide a pretty robust report to the Planning Commission in September. I know that the developers here heard a lot of comments out there. They're looking at things if they could make adjustments based on the feedback they received. And then kind of this process goes to the Planning Commission in September. We'll do a full consideration. Planning Commission will vote to provide a recommendation. They forward their recommendation to city council. And then city council will vote at three public meetings on whether to approve, deny, or modify or those types of things.
So I'm still confused as to whether there's still an opening for public comment. Not necessarily in this forum, but in any way to make a comment on that whatever's presented.
If it's a... If it's an item not on the agenda and that's not on the agenda, you could make a public comment, right?
Sure. And I would not be at all surprised if they allow for comment during...
In September.
Sure. So the process is we had a good neighbor meeting. And that is the... That is the point where folks come and ask questions and learn about it and give feedback. That step is done.
Well, I was out of state, so I didn't have a comment.
Understand. But that's what's... That's the procedure, right? Then it goes to Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration when it's ready. But it's not ready yet. So that'll be next month. You can tune in and/or attend. And if they have a... Agenda item for public comment there, you would be invited to speak at that point. You have the right to observe but not participate in those meetings. So that's a discretion of the commission. And then, as Mr. Rustnack said, it would go to the council for three ratings.
So there's one neighborhood meeting and pretty much that's it as far as comment?
Yes. I mean, for as far as a free-for-all for people living within a certain radius, yes. But everyone is welcome to come to the public meetings.
That seems minimal. I'm sad to hear that.
It's...
Maybe it's lawful, but it doesn't feel respectful of the community. But, okay. Thank you. I'll stay and listen.
Any other public comment? Okay. We'll move on to item number four, which is a zoning map amendment. We'll start with a staff presentation.
Okay. So this is a request of Nicole Duke. She's requesting a rezoning from RD 10, which is two-unit residence district to RS 6 on just under a quarter acre. This is on the south side of Heritage Place. This is the only vacant lot on this block. So we're on the south side of Heritage Place, just east of Heritage Drive. And the physical address is 435 Heritage Place. Ms. Duke would like to build a single-family residence. And the way the zoning code is constructed, the RD 10 only permits you to build duplexes or two-family homes. I know. Seems a little silly and might be something we look at to change to be a little bit more permissive. So I appreciate that. The head nods. Arguably, RD 10, that do zero lot lines in single-family, and other municipalities coexist just as a right. So maybe we'll have some more debate on that. But certainly compel the rezoning in this case. You can see a zoning map on the left. And then on the right is the future land use map, which is low intensity. And then so the requested zoning is consistent with our long-range plan. We did have a virtual good neighbor meeting on July 23rd. We did have one person outside of city staff in the applicant attend the meeting. Really just got... I was curious about what it was and had comments about the drainage that moves through along the back. No objections to the request. We did have one finding. And we do recommend the Planning Commission accept that finding and forward the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. I know I don't see Ms. Duke in the audience. I know she mentioned she was traveling. So you may not have an applicant presentation.
Okay. So no applicant presentation. Do we have any public comments on this? Okay. Any questions or comments?
I found this one very easy.
Yeah. Yeah. Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah. And go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm happy to start the motion unless any... I didn't want to jump in case anyone had questions. It seemed that obvious to me. Okay. I move the Planning Commission accept the listed finding and forward the zoning map amendment to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Wonderful. We get a roll call vote, please.
Janeser.
Aye.
Mickelson.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Yadi.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Moving on to item number five, preliminary subdivision plat. We'll start with a staff presentation.
Okay. So this is another portion of the Liberty Collins subdivision. This is a one-large lot subdivision. Also has private and public infrastructure. Total acreage is 8.05 acres. Property is located about 400 feet south of Dubuque Street and 200 feet east of North Liberty Road. You can see that area that's highlighted in light green. That area is not annexed into the corporate boundary yet. They have submitted an application. It has been approved by city council and it is now moving its way through the formal process of the state. Majority of the property is owned C3. So the development parcel, as it would be, would be zone C3. And then the road you can see is slightly outside those boundaries. And the future land use map designation is urban high intensity. So zoning and land use are consistent. And then a pretty straightforward subdivision extends free rain lane and ends in a cul-de-sac. And it just has the one large lot. Interestingly, along this section, a little bit, I guess if you look at the southernmost line that's going east-west, that is the boundary by which North Liberty corporate boundaries, agreed-to boundaries will extend to. And then south of that is the Coralville area. So we've kind of agreed to a... I think it's a quarter-section line and that, you know, north will go. So we can be friendly with our neighbors and all get along. So this is consistent with all of those agreements. But a pretty straightforward request. We did have a good neighbor meeting in conjunction with the rezoning a couple of years ago. And there really hasn't been any changes since then. We do have two findings. And so staff recommends you accept those two listed findings and forward the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any applicant presentation?
Hello. I'm Lacey Stutzman with MMS Consultants on behalf of the applicant. I believe staff's presentation was pretty comprehensive, but I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Okay. If no public comment, do we have any questions or comments?
Is it typical for a cul-de-sac to have a little bulbous point like that? I just don't remember other plats or plots like that having that little nook like that or it looked a little... You know how it's not completely square? I get there not always are, but it's just unique looking.
Yeah. I don't... I don't know that it's totally common, but maybe not uncommon. Yeah. And this one's a little strange, too, because it has a kind of a private street that extends south of it. And having those different jurisdictions and navigating that's been a little tricky.
Anything else?
What's going to go on in the land?
They haven't indicated yet. I anticipate maybe some lower-intensity commercial use, but just preliminary discussions at this point.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission, excuse me, accept the two listed findings and forward the preliminary subdivision plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Do we have a second? I'll second. We get a roll call vote, please.
Mickelson.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Yadi.
Aye.
Janeser.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. Moving on to item number six, a preliminary site plan. We'll start with a staff presentation.
Okay. So this is a preliminary site plan for a four-story building, multi-family building. The overall property size is 1.93 acres. That's shown there. The developable parcel is west of the Muddy Creek. But it is located on the south side of West Cherry Street, approximately 600 feet east of Rancho Way. The property is currently zoned CU C3. It was part of the initial request for the Urban Central District. And the future land use map designation is urban high intensity. And then the corridor along Muddy Creek is parks and open space. And part of the plat that we're contemplating, contemplates dedication of the Muddy Creek corridor to the city. Here's a... Here is the preliminary site plan that we've looked at. 63-unit building, related infrastructure, again, 1.93 acres. And it does show a trail connection running along the south of it, connecting to Muddy Creek, which is anticipated to extend all the way through into... All the way to Rancho Way to the east side. Again, from a site plan standpoint, Ben's pretty straightforward. And a couple of comments, and those have been addressed, so we appreciate that. Here are some elevations that show what this building would look like. We're preliminary site plan stage. We had the good neighbor meeting associated with the rezoning and didn't get any objections during that point in time. In fact, we actually received a lot of support from the property owners that were adjacent. So we do have one finding, which is the preliminary site plan would achieve consistency with approval standards. And we recommend that you accept that listed finding and forward the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Do we have an applicant presentation?
Brandon Pratt, Line Development Group. I don't have a presentation, but here to answer any questions anybody happens to have. Thanks.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Hello. My name is Artis Stoner. And my question was really more about... I looked at the drawings and it appears that this property extends all the way and includes Muddy Creek. Am I reading it correctly?
Currently, yes.
Okay. What have the findings from the DNR been to anticipate the water runoff from this substantial concrete footprint?
No.
Because it's all going downhill.
Yeah. No, only because we're at a preliminary stage. So this is just the preliminary approval. Subsequently, we would need to get into the full construction plans. Those would be reviewed along with the stormwater reports and the full engineering before we could allow any construction to occur. So we're only at a... This is just to... Similarly, we talked about at the good neighbor meeting. This gives them the authority to move to that next step, which is the engineering. So they get the preliminary approval. First, they got the zoning. Then this is preliminary approval. And then they move to the next step, which is the construction plan approval.
Iowa, we are... Hi.
That's all right.
My name is Grant. I'm the city attorney. North Liberty has an MS4 permit from the state. And that has to do with our water. And we have... As part of having an MS4 permit, we have to have certain controls for surface water quantity and quality, right? And so chapters 155 and 156 of the city ordinances govern pre-construction and post-construction site runoff. And so there are limits that we have to put in place to make sure that there's... For I think it's a 150% of... There are Iowa stormwater protection... There are laws in place at the state level run by the DNR that not only do we have to abide by, we are in charge of enforcing for everyone. And so... And that, as Mr. Rustnack was alluding to, happens later in the process. This is a picture of a building, right? And it's consistent with the zoning or not. And that's what we're talking about here today. When it gets into the nitty-gritty of whether it complies or not with the several requirements that are imposed and enforced by the city, that's handled at the staff level. And so we have people with the letters after their names making sure that they check all those boxes. And that's done internally. But this is for people to come and say, yes, I like it. No, I don't like it. Or what else could we change? Does that make sense?
Thank you for bearing with us. A lot of us are new to this procedure. We really are. I don't know about everybody else, but...
Yeah. It's Byzantine from the...
First time I've been here.
Sure. And staff here, you know, you can ask us questions now. You can ask us questions anytime. We're on your dime, right? So I'm happy to explain the process. It is a little confusing from the outside. But that is part of the process. It's not a part of the process tonight. Does that make sense?
Certainly. I also read on here that there is going to need to be additional parking in addition to what is marked on this.
Now, that is part of the process tonight.
It says in your notes on the presentation that your short significant amount of, in my opinion, significant, but maybe not. If it were my parking space, I would be upset if I didn't have one and it was somewhere off-site. So how far off-site are these other spots?
I'm confused about where you're...
If you fan down, it's actually on your presentation. Keep going. Well, let me pull it up on your website. And if you read the small print, it does say that there aren't enough parking spots and that they will be in another location later on. If you read the small print on the sheets on the right-hand side, halfway down. So there aren't enough parking spots. I'm just wondering, it says they're coming later. And it's part of an additional timeframe coming. And it doesn't speak to the fact that there are any guest parking. I mean, that isn't even enough parking spots for the locations you have. Anyway, that's what I read. Have a great day. I'll be here for more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
I have one other question.
Sure.
This is a general question because I'm not ever attended a planning and zoning meeting.
Yeah.
And that is, are you the folks who have an overall scheme of what our community is like? So the nature of a neighborhood and, you know, what it might feel like to put a four-story building into the oldest part of town and that sort of thing? Who is the body or who are the people that take into account that big picture? Is that you folks? Or is that nobody?
The council is at something of a disadvantage here. This is a comment period and not really a Q&amp;A period. So I'm kind of breaking the rules by responding to you at all. This is the type where you come up and say what you want to say, and we kind of listen and nod. But, you know... But for the purpose of...
I can make a statement, then.
No. But for the purpose of being, you know, I want to be helpful, too.
Yeah.
So the planning and zoning... If you have zoning in Iowa, you need to have a planning and zoning commission. You need to have a board of adjustment. And those... All these things go together. So the purpose of this is to see whether the proposals achieve consistency with both the... What they understand the code to be and the environment. And then they make a recommendation. This body is an advisory board. They say, we think this is a good idea. We think this is a bad idea. Or we think you should approve the applicant's plan. Or we think you should reject. Or we think you should change it. They can make whatever recommendation they want. The city council is the body that makes the actual decision. They are free to adopt and incorporate and are often wise to do so, the suggestions from the Planning and Zoning Commission. These folks have... Generally, they have a background in the development of building or particular interest in the community. They all live here, right? But the council then is free to accept or modify or ignore their findings and make their own decision. But that's the process in the state of Iowa. Is that responsive?
Well, thank you. I think that's what I may ask right... Or what I may say right now, it seems like, so.
Sure.
Did you answer the parking question?
Yeah. Though I... They will have to demonstrate prior to moving. Good comment. Appreciate that. They'll have to demonstrate consistency with the required parking, which is 95 before we can move to city council.
And do they ever require any guest parking?
It's... So the way the parking calculation is worked out is it... So the calculation we have is 1.5 spaces per unit. And so that number is reflective of what we anticipate being for the guests. So some people will have one parking, will need a parking for one need. Some may have more for guests. And so that's how that parking ratio was determined.
Nobody has half a spot.
Yeah.
I don't think so. I just know that for a two-bedroom apartment, one and a half parking slots plus it seems like a...
They're not all two and a half. So they're not all two-bedroom. Like, some are one-bedroom.
Oh, no. I didn't say that. I just said that they're only calculating 1.5 for every two-bedroom apartment.
Understood.
That's all I was saying.
Yep.
Okay. Any other public comment? If not, comments, questions from the commission?
Given the questions, is the staff recommendation still the same?
I think you could make a recommendation subject to depicting the 95 parking spaces. I... To be honest, this must have been overlooked. And I'm not comfortable with saying, we'll figure it out later somewhere else. Just we're compelling something else. So I think subject to the development... This preliminary site plan meeting, the 95 parking spaces is a good recommendation.
And what I'm finding on here is it says parking shall be shared with future development.
Did you guys have other questions? Because I can address the parking in a motion, but I want you to have other questions first.
If I may, just for a second.
Yeah.
I know we're specifically talking about this site. But it is fully intended to have cross-easement parking against all of the commercial and residential that we have going on the entire project. So I don't know what that total parking count will be because we're nowhere near that phase, but it will be more than ample.
But that wouldn't satisfy...
Yeah.
That... Yeah. And that would be my question is that, as we're looking at this, Brandon, do you know where that's going to be? And can it... Are you in a position where it can be incorporated into the site at, you know, when it's ready to go?
Yeah. We have a large parking field directly to the west of this.
Okay. That's what I'm looking at here.
Again, it's conceptual at this time, but there's no structures that are being planned directly to the west of this. I'm going to throw a number. Don't hold me. Maybe 300 feet to the west of it. So that's all slated to be concrete to the west. Yeah. And then just to make sure everybody's aware, this is a four-story structure with underground parking. So not pictured on the site plan as another 41 stalls underneath. It's factored into the ratio. But when you're just looking at it from overhead, I want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yeah. And I see it in the breakdown there. And there... Again, understanding if this is a concept plan. Any idea if there's... That's one level of parking, right? There's not a... There's no ramp in there?
Correct. It's just, yep, one level.
All ground level.
That's correct. Yep.
So is that the difference between the 95 and the 81 on here? Is that those extra spots will be made up with that other parking from the future development?
Our intention would be to do cross-easement parking with the project to the west of it, where we would be able to have ample enough of parking, yes. where we would be able to have ample enough of parking, yes. And then just to address, we're at 63 units. Again, everything's conceptual at this point in time, but we just had conversations today, actually modifying and doing maybe a few less units. So right now, I think it's pretty close to a 50-50 split with one bedroom, so approximately 30 one-bedrooms. And our average demographic is about 1.2 cars per one-bedroom household with the other units we have in town.
Did you explore having the building closer to Cherry and parking behind it?
Yeah, to be able to, to be able to make sure that we could get the trail access where it needed to be, in addition to with some detention. And then there's a, it's a little bit of an odd-shaped corner lot. You can kind of see the triangle at the top. If we moved it further, we actually lost parking because we had, we couldn't gain it anywhere else. Unfortunately, we did. The idea was to try to get as close to Cherry as possible. I think that's kind of the, conceptually, what the city is looking for, so that was about as close as we could get. The one thing, I don't know if you can turn to the front elevation at all, Russ. The top center, top left elevation, that's the front of the building. One thing that we really tried to do, again, everything we're trying to do here is to create community, walkability, connectivity. So the lower level of those apartments actually have an entrance out of the front. So if you look at the side elevation, you can see kind of how it protrudes out. So we have kind of a little living den area that sticks out that has access from the front of the building. So the goal, again, is to do something different that hasn't been done here before, create that connectivity, walkability, and not just a, you know, a normal building on top of a parking ramp.
Yeah, and that white triangle above the parking lot actually is part of that lot as well, but there's just so many utilities that come across through that area. That area is not even usable through there.
Yeah, I failed to mention that. That's part of the reason we, it's pretty jam-packed with stuff.
So, yeah, ideally, we wanted the building to kind of be, you know, along the street. It just didn't, didn't work in this sense.
So that's the main that runs to the condos that would be south of this location that I'm seeing there on that.
There's, yeah, and I think there's a forced main that goes through there as well.
Brandon, you closed on the 435 already?
It's this week.
It's this week.
Sorry, 435, yes, for, there's another one, the one to the west.
So, Brandon, the UCD has all of these under contract or executed already. So when they talk about being able to have a cross-easement for parking, that is something that is, should be pretty painless to do.
Absolutely.
I mean, you can get from one lot to the other, you could probably do that as a condition that you would be willing to.
Hundred percent, yeah. Yeah, I think, if memory serves me, I didn't plan on speaking about this tonight, but I think it's 13 separate parcels. We've already acquired 12 of them, so we just have one left.
And I don't know if you would know this, or if you guys might answer it better, but what is our average occupancy looking at right now in the city?
I'd probably just defer you on your.
From multifamily standpoint.
Yeah.
I can tell you the apartments that I'm involved in, and then the market research that, as our competitors, which we try to keep track of, in buildings we own and the buildings that I'm involved in, right now, the earliest you can get an apartment is September, and we have one. So we are 100% and don't have enough. And the reality is, unfortunately, in today's world, just the cost of construction is so high that, that's why you're not seeing a whole lot of projects going on right now between interest rates and construction costs. So there is certainly a demand, and inside of the Good Neighbor Meeting, I explained this, and it's a difficult conversation, but there is a demand for affordable housing. The definition of affordable housing is not what it was five years ago, or 10 years ago, or 20 years ago. The reality is new construction, affordable housing is what you're looking at, but that's part of the reason you're not seeing a lot of it built. And we are losing a lot of people moving to other cities right now because they have product and North Liberty doesn't.
Brandon, this is market rent, correct?
Yes, everything is, this is Class A, market rent. That's correct.
I think sometimes affordable housing and subsidized housing get kind of.
Yeah, thank you for.
Misunderstood by people.
And they're not.
Yeah. So for legal advice, if I were to make a motion that accepts the finding and makes it subject to confirming the parking.
I think you can accept the finding as is, and then your recommendation would be to, you're going to recommend, as staff wrote, subject to.
Or conditioned.
The, the, subject to the condition that there be an additional 14 parking spaces provided.
Can I make one comment? Can, just a caveat, can it be meeting the code as opposed to saying additional parking spaces?
This is preliminary, so you're, what you're going to move forward with the council meets the code, and then if you change and say, I get smaller, then you'll have less parking.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, let's say meet the code.
You just want to make sure you go to council and meet the code.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much.
And the code is the 1.5 spaces per.
Yes.
Or that's 80. Yep. But I don't want to jump the gun if there are other questions.
You've talked about, kind of in some of your handouts that have been in, like, on the city website and in the Good Neighbor Meetings about art and walkability, and what are your plans for kind of the grounds aesthetically to add to the community?
Yeah, so obviously, the walking trail that goes behind this building will connect throughout and go all the way over to Rancho Way and Penn Street, or excuse me, Rancho Way and 965. We kind of uncovered something pretty cool. We're figuring out how to incorporate it on the Solomon's Landing Project, and maybe staff members can help me out. We uncovered, buried in the ground, something called Inner City. I think maybe that was originally the Inner City Industrial Park, and it's 20 feet?
30.
30, it's a 30-feet concrete block that's got Inner City etched into it. It's really cool, it's really old-looking. So we're figuring out a way to incorporate that, whether that ends up directly on this side or on the neighboring site, but, so we'll tie, tie back a little bit to kind of North Liberty. We went back as far as, I think, 1996, and it was still on the aerials, you could see it, so it's, it's kind of cool. It's probably close to 30 years old, so that's one thing. We also have a couple of different local artists that we're planning on hiring when we actually put the entire boulevard through to come back in, do something along the lines of arches and artwork and sculptures, and so, all preliminary at this point, but, but it will certainly incorporate on this. And then you can't see it really well, but in the, will be the lower left-hand or the southwest corner, that's our entryway into the apartments. We have an outdoor area with grills, outdoor seating, a hedge, an area for community to gather. It's a little bit more elevated than what you would see in a normal apartment complex, so just again, focusing on that community.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Again, I know we're focusing on this site, but parking is a topic of discussion. We have a preliminary site plan, obviously, that encompasses everything from a multifamily standpoint, and I think we're somewhere between, please don't quote me on this, but around 1.8 parking spots. So when you look at the cross-easement parking with the projection of what we're building everywhere, we're going to be far above the minimal 1.5. And as a developer, we want that as well, right? We, our people need to be happy and be able to park, et cetera, so.
And that's including, you brought it up, so I'm going to ask, that's including the spots that would be part of the more, like, commercial side of things, or that's not included?
That's not included, yeah.
Okay.
That would be specific just to the multifamily.
Okay.
Again, everything's a little bit of a moving target, so, you know, I can't write that in stone, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's fair, I just.
But that does not include the commercial.
Thinking if the parking spot was a quarter mile away.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a super convenient place to park to be groceries in.
It would be hard to rent apartments.
Yeah.
We're not going to do that. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I move the Planning Commission accepted listed finding, subject to confirmation with city staff, that the parking meets code requirements, and forward the preliminary site plan to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Baffkey?
Aye.
Mickelson?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Janeezer?
Aye.
Yadi?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item number seven is a zoning map amendment. We'll start with a staff presentation.
Okay, thank you. This property was recently acquired by the city of North Liberty to incorporate into future expansion of the fire station rehabilitation or redevelopment. It is 0.27 acres, and it is currently addressed as 240, 242 North Main Street, had two units on there, which have since been demolished, and there's an outbuilding that still remains there, but the city owns property currently. Property is currently zoned RD10, and the land use is urban low intensity. So part of the request is to change the land use to public, and that makes the new zoning being requested consistent with the land use. So that's incorporated into the request. We don't have Good Neighbor Meetings with city-initiated rezonings, however, we do send out letters to let the public know, so I did do a radius of 200 feet and then expanded the borders to make sure we were picking up the blocks. We've been super communicative with the neighbor directly to the north, he's been very nice. They wrote a letter, it is in the file, have said that we support the rezoning, it's a good thing to have, just ask for consideration of offense when we do the development, and we want to be good neighbors, and that won't be a problem whatsoever. So we do have two findings, one related to the land use, and then the second to the rezoning, and we recommend that you accept those listed findings and forward both requests to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Great, thank you. Any public comment? Okay. Any questions from the comments? Seems pretty straightforward and very necessary.
Yep.
So I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move the Planning Commission accept the listed findings and forward the future land map amendment and zoning map amendment to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mickelson?
Aye.
Yadi?
Aye.
Baffkey?
Aye.
Janeezer?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to item number eight, approval of previous minutes. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the previous minutes.
And a second?
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Moving on to item nine, any planning updates?
This might come as a surprise to you, but we had a Good Neighbor Meeting about Urban Central District, so it was well-attended. We held it in person over at the 4191. Commissioner Mickelson was there, but it was, it was well-attended, you know, these are tough, these are the toughest ones we do. And I would probably estimate we had about 35 people there, but it was a full room, and as always, people keep it Iowa-nice, and they were respectful. I think some people are obviously passionate. We've had some longtime property owners in the original town area, and so, like I said, these are the tough ones, but, you know, these were the opportunity people had to kind of ask those questions and push us in the direction to start researching things that maybe we weren't thinking of. Although, you know, a lot of, a lot of requests are similar, traffic, stormwater, and compatibility and those things, so. You know, initially, they were planning on moving forward to the August 5th, today's meeting, and we said, you know, maybe let's just hit the pause button if you've got some time, and they said, yeah, we think that's a good idea. So they're, you know, they're looking at alternatives to design and different things they could do to try and, to try and, but, you know, I would expect a pretty, pretty good Planning Commission meeting on it next month, so. And somewhat relatedly, we had the Cherry, kind of draft of the Cherry Street reinvestment district. We're kind of looking at this whole area about some recommendations. I think that'll be rolled out sometime in November, but, you know, that was a really fun exercise to be involved in, and just kind of looking at this whole area of kind of what it wants to be when it grows up. And so those findings will be, I think, presented in a couple of months, so.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good one. And I, you know, what we saw, too, I thought was important, is to, you know, respect the original town area, and I didn't see any divergence from that.
On the urban development part, you were saying, was it 11 out of 12 parcels or 12 out of 13 parcels?
Yeah.
What was the Good Neighbor Meeting about? Just one of those or the whole concept?
It was, it was about the rezoning of.
Just the one, okay.
The eastern portion of the multifamily stuff, so the western commercial has already been, I believe, zoned, and the proposed multifamily rezoning.
The gray area to the east adjacent to the railroad tracks from Cherry to Zeller.
Yeah.
So interestingly, it's.
You can build a factory there today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interestingly, it's zone industrial, and if you look at even 1990s aerials, this was the edge of town, and Cherry Street didn't even extend to Rancho. It just was a private drive through a farmer's land.
Proposed Cherry Street, we saw today.
And so we have the plan still in file, 1992, it was built in 1993, Cherry Street curves up, and you, and you see this different era of, aside from this, right, this legacy industrial that happened in the 50s, 60s, 70s, because it was on the edge of town. Similar circumstance to the, you know, industrial that you see behind LD Doors, you know, right? Because it's like, why would you put industrial there? It was like, that was the edge of, or Centro. Why would you put industrial, that was the edge of town, and then, and then we built around it, and then all of a sudden, right, arguably, that industrial is no longer appropriate there. And so the big question is, what is? So it's different than, this is a vacant farmland with ID zoning, right? This is industrial zoning that has a development, right? So I think, I don't know that that gets missed, but I think that should be emphasized. I will certainly emphasize it as we go through the process, that what they are requesting is, it would be considered, although it's commercial, it's a, it's a less intense, or what we call a downzoning.
Well, I definitely want to acknowledge and appreciate the patience and politeness and helpfulness of the city staff in explaining this. This cannot be easy for anyone, but that you guys take your time and explain it to both the residents and us, multiple times and questions are much appreciated, because I can't wait to be here in 20 years when we say, do you remember?
I, I feel like, and maybe this has already been done, but before I was involved in this process, I had no idea about how any of this worked, and so I can see how people kind of jump on this idea of it's a negative thing. I wonder if there's an opportunity to work with Nick, who does communications, like, you explained it so well, like, these are the steps that have to go through, and these are the stops, and I wonder if something could be put together and, on the website in kind of like, simple terms for people that aren't city planners and city attorneys, of this is the process we look at.
Yeah.
Because I think then maybe there'd be a little bit less, or like, the tax rebates that are happening. I think there is a very false idea going around that the city has $20 million to throw at something, and so there's comments on social media, well, why is it being put at this? Well, there's not this magical $20 million sitting there, but, you know, just like, when people see those numbers, I don't think there's necessarily a great understanding of what that is, and I don't think I would have understood it if I wasn't involved in this. So I just wonder if there's a way to, like, bring some of that stuff a little bit more. I know it's definitely there if you go look for it, but I don't know that people are really going to look for the nitty-gritty details, they're more just jumping on.